Okay, call to order. Um, regular meeting, Board of Director and Moderator, Penice Waterman District for Monday, November 15, 2021, at 6:02. A roll call, please.
Director Roberson?
Here.
Director Adams? Director Anderson?
Here.
Director Malik?
Here.
Director Riley?
He's showing up as an attendee, needs to be moved over.
Him over. Going back to Director Adams?
Here.
Director Riley?
You're muted, George.
Present.
Vice Chair Paul?
I'm trying to hear anyone.
Here.
Chair Edwards?
Here.
All directors are present.
Thank you. Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice. Thank you. Uh, do we have any additions and corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. Next order of business. Oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information items, closed session items, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Oral communication is open.
So if you would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand via Zoom or if you're calling in, push star nine. And Sarah, do you have the timer ready? Ready?
I do.
So the number ending in nine zero two. I'll ask you to unmute.
Good evening.
When you're ready, please present your comment and you may identify yourself with the clerk's record.
Okay, this is Nina Beatty. On Thursday morning, starting at 10:00 a.m., the CPUC will receive comments and then decide whether CalM's general rate increase and other requests are approved. Hidden in their proposal is CalM's request to install AMI smart water meters and infrastructure to the tune of millions of dollars. Excuse me? I hear someone is... CalM did not tell customers about this in its public notices. Can I start over again, please?
Yes, you could start over.
Thank you.
So just everyone, please mute yourself if you're not the speaker.
Okay. Again, this is Nina Beatty. On Thursday morning, starting at 10:00 a.m., the CPUC will receive comments and then decide whether CalM's general rate increase and other requests are approved. Hidden in their proposal is CalM's request to install AMI smart water meters and their infrastructure to the tune of millions of dollars. CalM did not inform customers about this in its public notices, so the public was denied their informed due process. CalM requested this new expensive AMI infrastructure, which is a capital project, even though the buyout is imminent. This project would give CalM a capital asset gain, which may create an unwanted inflating of the cost of buyout for the smart meter system the public never wanted. This would saddle the district with long-term contracts for something the district already said last year it doesn't want, and CalM will force customers to pay every month in order not to have an AMI AMR meter, so-called opting out. The costs are externalized onto ratepayers and liabilities for all problems, which could be crushing, will be on the district after buyout, which endangers the buyout. Those costs and problems include health and environmental damage and discrimination against EMF-disabled customers. The CPUC proposes approving this wireless RF radiation system despite that the FCC has just lost a lawsuit on its RF radiation exposure guidelines. Customers have also paid CalM millions of dollars for so-called leaks. The company wants this practice to continue. When CalM installed AMR smart meters, problems with overbilling arose. Smart meters are notorious for overbilling and inaccuracy, and investigations often find no leaks. The explanation appears to be false reads by the meter. CalM issues paper credits for these high bills, but CalM should not be automatically reimbursed. They have no right to collect paper credits that deflate the leaks account for unproved leaks, and more smart meters will not fix this problem. I ask you Board Directors to call into the CPUC meeting Thursday morning and tell the CPUC in the one minute allowed what the board already decided last year. MPWMD is opposed to smart meters, and it is opposed to smart meter opt-out fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina Beatty. So, do we have anybody else at this time that would like to provide public comment during oral communications? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, consent calendar. Anyone on the board wish for anything poor from consent calendar?
And Sarah, you could take down the timer.
If no one on the board, anyone in the public would like something poor from the consent calendar?
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, need a motion in a second.
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, move by the first, by Chair to approve, second by Director Riley. Okay, any, anything on a question? If not, roll call vote, please.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson? Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Yep.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda, General Manager's report. GM.
Well, thank you. We've got a PowerPoint to queue up. We'll walk through it. Should be known that it only reflects a single month of the new water year, October, so there's not a whole lot of news to glean from this, from this presentation. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison of actual versus target, and you can see that we were within 14 acre feet of the target. This only shows Carmel River and the seaside groundwater basin. Beginning the first of the year, we're going to take a look at both this table and the next table, which we can go to, next slide, and perhaps figure out how to combine them up. So on this one, water projects and rights, the only takeaway here is that we were under recovery from pure water Monterey, but you should note that only 298 acre feet were injected, so the 344 that were taken out reflects a little bit of carryover from water previously injected but not withdrawn. So that project continues to do pretty well at about 300 acre feet per month of injection. Next slide. Uh, nothing to take away here because in one month, the demand, or you know, this production for delivery to customer services are proxy for demand, about 40 acre feet over, under last year to date, but again, only a single month. Next chart, this one I like. You can see the October rainfall.
Yay.
More than, more than double the historical average, so we're off to a good start, and there's, we didn't get hit as hard as we had hoped in the last atmospheric river. It kind of pushed to the north a little bit, but the fact that it did choose to rain in November already is a good sign as well. Uh, next chart is the rain chart where you can see daily are the bar charts and then the line is year-to-date. And then rainfall typically, next chart, last chart, translates to unimpaired flow, and you can see it was just slightly higher than the historical average. So October was a very good start. I know we continue to use the D-word, the drought word throughout California, but we are off to a relatively good beginning. Although we're halfway through the month of November, I would have liked to have seen a little bit more to date, but you know, fingers crossed, we'll see what happens in the next couple of weeks. Now, there was an interesting article posted today about climate change and the warming of the oceans, and the conclusion of the author was that we could actually invert North, Pacific Northwest weather with Pacific Southwest weather, which means for a number of years, we could be wetter and they could be drier up there. So it'll all be interesting to see how it plays out. Now, under General Manager's report, I've got another item. Joel, if you can put the PDF up. This is an analysis of long-term water spend, water supply spending to date. We categorize our water supply spending as money spent on actual water supply projects, water quality, monitoring, testing, and the personnel and services that go along with just the water supply aspect of our, of our work. This chart actually runs a little funny. 2021 is on the left-hand column, and then all the years since 2013 go to the right, but the total is the yellow column posted all the way to the right. And what I wanted to just highlight, so you understand, is the water supply charge to date has brought in just over $30 million, 30.5 million. The salaries, you know, over a relatively long period, a nine-year period, is about 11 million. But then you see the project expenditures. We spent 42 million on actual projects, operating expenditures, professional fees related to the projects, and some additional capital outlay like trucks and smaller scheduled capital expenses. And then we also had the debt service on the Rabobank, now Mechanics Bank loan. So you can see in the water supply sector, we've spent $60 million. So the difference is a negative 29 million, almost 30 million, but we have received reimbursements from grants, from some California American reimbursement, and from the Bureau of the, I'm sorry, the State Revolving Fund. So the reimbursements offset some of that difference, that deficit. And then we have been starting to sell waters, about $6 million of water sales offsets. Monies that are being used, as you can see, the project expenditures in 2021 went up, and that's because we're now selling pure water Monterey water. But all told, we're still about 9.3 million in the hole, meaning has not been covered by the water supply charge or reimbursements, and that's money that you might consider that we owe ourselves, that we've been subsidizing the water supply area with user fee, property tax, and any other source of money. A little bit later, I'll focus in on similar numbers just related to pure water Monterey, but I thought you would enjoy just an overview of what we've been doing. $60 million in nine years is quite a bit of an investment. Obviously, once Pure Water Monterey got the funding agreement signed and delivered with the State Revolving Fund, all of its capital costs shifted to the loan payments. So all of ours were the pre-construction costs, and we'll be entering a period of that again for the Pure Water Monterey expansion. So just some interesting information I thought I would share with you. And that concludes the General Manager's report under item 10.
Thank you, GM. Any more questions than GM? Director Riley, go ahead.
Dave, can you give us a little bit of an update on the four-door monitoring well number nine and the status of the negotiations for replacing that well?
Yeah, no, no status to report. I finally did hear from Ram Scherzinger, the General Manager at Marina Coast Water District. They do have an interest. He's assigned it off to one of his staff, and we'll try to circle back around here in short order. But that's the important thing. Now, we know all three parties have an interest at some level, but yeah, nothing, nothing to report. Nobody's stepped up and said, we'll be the project manager, let's get this thing moving. So we're gonna have to have that conversation. Thank, thank you.
Any other questions other GM? If none, we'll move along to District Council. Go ahead, General Counsel.
Thank you and good evening. I have three items to provide an oral report on. The first is the Pure Water Monterey expansion. All parties have agreed in concept to the amended and restated water purchase agreement. A draft has actually been executed of the MOU by this district and by Monterey One Water. CalM has yet to sign that. CalM does seek both some non-substantive edits and its internal protocols also delayed its ability of sign. The parties have agreed to revise the MOU to address these concerns, and we are expecting that to be signed later this week. On two other aspects of Pure Water Monterey expansion, the PUC is holding a status conference, and the complaint raised by the district that has resulted in the ALJ order that they and MOU be signed for the water purchase agreement. The status conference is set to occur on December 15th of this year. CalM has not yet filed its response to that. CalM's responses anticipated the week of Thanksgiving. And then finally, Monterey One Water has prepared an addendum to the certified SEIR for the expanded pure water project. Public hearing to consider the approval of that addendum has been set for Monday, November 9th at 6:00 p.m.
December 9th?
Yes. No, November, November 29th.
Or 29th.
29th, okay.
Right. Turning to the status of the Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association lawsuit, MPTA and the individual Richard Hoyer has challenged the district's water supply charge. That's the fee that the district has been collected, collecting since 2012 pursuant to the ordinance 152 process. That's the charge that's collected on the property tax roll and is used to fund water services. The, the district did file the Prop 218 process to impose that fee and considers the propriety of that fee annually at the time that you have your budget hearings. Your board has legislative discretion to suspend or reduce the charge if it's not needed, but your board has found regularly that the collections need to continue. This is not the first time that MPTA has challenged the district over the water supply charge. In 2018, the appellate court found in favor of the district and ruled against MPTA's challenge. MPTA is now bringing yet another challenge to test the sufficiency of the, the charge. They're asking the court to reject the, and sunset the water supply charge. We have, we, on behalf of the district, have brought a demur to contest the ability of MPTA to, to make its challenge. That demur is going to be set for hearing on December 17th at 9:00 a.m., and that's going to be heard in Department 14 before Judge Anderson. The demur basically tests the legal sufficiency of the pleadings. The, we're challenging the adequacy of MPTA's assertions by saying that MPTA failed to exhaust its administrative remedies, has not timely brought this action, chose to bring this action instead of a validation lawsuit, which could have been brought but is no longer timely. And finally, that the ordinance 152 process does not set a mandatory duty that the court could enforce. It is our perspective that this is in essence a policy dispute as to whether and to fund and how to fund future water supplies. And our perspective is should be resolved in the political arena, not the, the court. The final item is an update as to the LAFCO proceedings. The LAFCO hearing on the district's application to annex light property and also to exercise its latent powers is set for hearing on December 6th. As we know, that is, the continued date was to December 6th. Our discussions with LAFCO staff indicate that is likely to proceed and not be to continue after that date, so we are looking for a final determination. On December 6th, LAFCO will hear comment and must make a decision based upon findings, and the findings have to be supported by substantial evidence. The General Manager, just recently, I believe this morning, transmitted our district's final response to some of the ongoing questions that LAFCO staff has had. Once the hearing decision is issued, the, the legal process does allow a protest to be filed by registered voters. A protest to be adequate has to be signed by 25% of the registered voters, and that period will run by mid-January. That includes my report on the three items on the agenda.
Thank you, General Counsel. Any questions for General Counsel? Uh, go ahead, Director R.
Hi, I would like an update on the general rate case schedule and the, the AMI piece of that. Can you do that today or can you do that in a future meeting? I don't know.
That's, Director Riley, that's gonna be put on the agenda for December, December meeting.
Fine, thank you.
That's gonna be on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, next item. Just a couple of questions from me to General Counsel.
Yes, sir.
The day after Thanksgiving, CalM's both have signed the water purchase agreement or not. So you telling me in December, we're gonna have a hearing on under something? Or is that date still in effect?
No, CalM has an opportunity to file a response to the ALJ on the complaint. That is the hearing that is set for December, December 15th. So, so that's not the date by which CalM should be signing an MOU on the water purchase agreement. We're anticipating that CalM will be signing a water purchase agreement earlier. We're expecting that to be signed sometime this week for an MOU.
The MOU, but the actual agreement can't, cannot be signed until the commission approves it and approves capturing the purchase price of water in rates. So that could take as much, as much as eight or nine months, or it could be as short as four months, but it'll, it'll take a while for them to review that application.
Okay, and my next question to General Counsel, the Monterey Peninsula Taxpayer Association, do that lawsuit have anything to do with our application to LAFCO?
Not directly. Yeah, why don't I take that one? Yeah, they had two thrusts to their argument that it was relevant. One is that it would affect our ability to pay for the acquisition. It's now been pointed out to LAFCO that in fact, the water supply charge or any legacy district revenues were not utilized to analyze the purchase. It was simply water rates would, would the enterprise fund of the water distribution system support the acquisition with savings? And the answer is, it does with or without the water supply charge in existence. The secondary thrust was, without the water supply charge, the district, district would not have sufficient revenues to pay legal expenses and continue down the path of a condemnation proceeding. We had previously addressed those issues in correspondence. We're doing our reserve planning based on the expectation there will be additional large-scale charges, and we addressed the cost possibility of walking away, and we've already addressed all those, that we have the financial, financing obligations in place to do so. So in, in either case, pursuing the action or pursuing the acquisition, the water supply charge would have no impact on the ability to go forward.
Okay, thank you, General Manager. Okay, any other board questions? If not, we'll move on to next item. Directors report, including items A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4, roads trips, conferences, attendance, and meeting. Any board members have anything to report? Okay, Director Riley, go ahead.
Um, I have two brief reports. One is the Water Master, the Water Master had a committee meeting on their data base calculations for who owes what and the status of the basin compared to the pumpers. There's some headway on that. There's, there's been a follow-up of that committee meeting, but I haven't seen any data yet. But anyway, we just had that meeting and there's a little bit of movement toward looking at the data. I, I've been a critic for some time now, but I don't think the data is management-related, and if we're, have a management responsibility, we should see data that supports the management analysis we need to be, we need to understand. So that's, that's the Water Master Committee meeting. The other, the other meeting was with the Special District Association of Monterey County. They met in person. It was interesting, and Senator Anna Caballero was the speaker. Anyway, there's just a variety of information going on for special districts in general. But I did want to point out one thing. The Special District Association is trying to work with a national effort to try to educate other local governments, the, the value of special district services to municipal responsibilities, and I don't know where that's gonna go, but the reason that was, became important is that in the bailout, some of the, some of the federal legislation that was, that recently been approved, seemed to ignore special districts in general. They dealt with counties, they dealt with cities, and they kind of ignored special districts. So there's, there's an effort to try to make sure, and it's a Washington ignorance level that is being addressed here. And so they're gonna be moving in that direction. I found that very interesting, and, and it's, and it's one reason why special districts in general, us, but also throughout the entire country, got pretty short shrift on some of the federal commitments in the, in the policy for the money that's coming to some locals. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other directors? Okay, if not, none? I had a couple of them, but I think they were answered with General Counsel report, but the infrastructure bill has been signed, and there's money out there. So, uh, General Manager, we'll be talking about a grant rider, so we can get some money for the seaside basin and everything else we need, but that's out there, and we'll be talking about that coming up.
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have an expectations management report on the December board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? Anything else? If not, none? All right, GM, it's all yours. Public hearings.
All right, item 13 is the first reading of an ordinance, and this is being handled by Stephanie Locke.
Thank you. Joel? So this is the first reading of ordinance number 189, and it amends a number of different rules, just clarifies, amends, adds a couple of new things in. I'm gonna go through each of the items that are related to the ordinance and then give the board an opportunity to ask questions. Next, please. So basically, to summarize it, we start with amendments to Rule 11, which is our definitions. We are amending the definitions for the high-efficiency clothes washer and high-efficiency dishwasher definitions so that they match the current Energy Star requirements. We need to have this match because the definition applies both to our rebate program and to our permitting requirements. A public water system is being added to our definitions, and that is so that we can add to Rule 21 a requirement that the state Water Resource Division of Drinking Water has to preliminarily approve any water distribution system prior to the district's consideration. There's been concern in the past several years about the reliability of water supply for small systems, and so the Division of Drinking Water has been involved with any of those applications. We're adding a definition for a smart flow meter We're adding a definition for a smart flow meter to facilitate a new rebate. And I will go into a little more detail on what that is for any board member and public who does not know what those are. And then rules related to the processing of water permits for tenant improvements, sub-metering, and reporting requirements have been clarified, and those are used, you know, for the most part, those are just changing a word here or there, or adding a little more terminology so that it makes a little more sense to someone reading our rules. Next. We are adding a provision to allow permanent sub-metering in apartment buildings of four or more units. And that includes condo buildings or common interest developments. Sub-metering technology allows for accountability, reporting, and billing, which is what the district has supported as far as our metering requirements going back in time as a method to promote water conservation. And at this point, we've had probably in the neighborhood of seven to ten requests for what we've called special circumstances for large projects like like a hotel, or not a hotel, excuse me, an apartment development, where they've had to come to the board to ask to have this inline metering. And at this time, the technology is solid and it is appropriate that it goes into our rules as one of the exemptions to our Cal Am or water company metering requirement. We've added a kind of definition for what a water permit waiver is. And that essentially is when a jurisdiction wants us to review a project, but when a water permit really is not required, then we issue what we call a waiver. And it basically involves the same effort level as a water permit. We just don't go through the process of recording deed restrictions on a property. We're adding in some requirements for swimming pools that are filled with trepped water. They have to have a state license, the state water hauler license. And then we're adding in that a pool that is serviced and supplied by a water hauler has to also have one fixture unit of either credit or water on site that is used to maintain the pool because there's a continual need for a small amount of water to backfill filters and top off the pool and that kind of thing. So that's something that would not be dealt with by trepped-in water. It would be dealt with by the local water supply. And we've addressed our process for relocating a clothes washer in into an existing dwelling that has been supplied with a or has had access to a common laundry room. Primarily, this happens in apartment situations or condo situations that have a common laundry room that's shared by everybody in the building. And if a apartment dweller or condo owner wants to install a laundry facility or put a clothes washer in their own unit, if they have a common laundry that they have access to, we do not charge them water for that. There's no change in the capacity to to put a laundry in your own unit. We have disallowed credit for a reduced water use capacity for relocating a component of a non-residential business to an out-of-district location or to another water system. And as an example, no credit would be granted for doing, say, a restaurant said that they're gonna take all their laundry to another location. District, please reduce the capacity. We would not reduce capacity for that type of use. Or another example is where a hotel may take some of their laundry to an out-of-district location. And that that would also fall into this category. Next, please. We are deleting rule ninety-one, which is titled Short Term Variance. It was a rule that was adopted at the very beginning of the district. And it was a process for handling water permits before we have our before we ever had our current permit process in place. So it's obsolete and it serves no purpose in our rules at this time. We're adding a replacement rebate for high-efficiency dishwashers and ultra-high-efficiency toilets when they get replaced, and it's been at least ten years since the initial rebate was issued. And obviously, we want to continue to encourage people to put in the highest efficiency appliances. This has come up and we actually allow, right now, the replacement of high-efficiency clothes washers after eight years. And so we've had this desire to to allow additional rebates so that we can continue to reap the savings of these low-water use appliances. We're proposing to reduce our our high-efficiency toilet rebate from seventy-five dollars to fifty dollars. And that's primarily because high-efficiency toilets have been required in the state of California for a number of years now. The rebate is to encourage people to retrofit their toilets. And I think a fifty-dollar rebate is incentive also for people who have not been required to replace them. If your toilet gets broken and you have to replace it, you would have to put in a high-efficiency toilet. So this is just a little help with that, and that was, Cal Am was okay with that. And then adding a new rebate for smart flow meters. And you may be asking, what is a smart flow meter? So next, please. So smart flow meters are devices that attach to a water pipe or line, whether it's from your water meter to the house or when you get to the house, the line that goes inside your house or the line that goes out to your irrigation system. They can report water use and send alerts to your cellphone or to your computer, to your email, alerting you to the fact that there's some unusual water use pattern occurring that you should be aware of. That also gives customers an opportunity to dial in and see what's going on in their home or business from their phones and from their computers. You can see what the use is at any time and kind of track what your overall uses or your budget. And also, to help you be aware of potentially high-water bills or potential water leaks. And a great example of this is that people who may have second homes here and are not at home to see if something is not working correctly would be alerted to the fact that maybe they had a malfunction in their house that would result in a high-water bill. And the rebate would encourage this use by putting up to two hundred dollars as a rebate. Cal Am is supportive of that. We have, let's see, they're both internet-connected or cellular-connected, remote flow sensing technologies are available. And so I think I kind of went through that. You can put it in different places. And the cost of these devices runs between about a hundred and fifty dollars up to seven hundred dollars or more, depending on the type of situation. If it's an apartment building, it's going to cost obviously more than that. But for most residential and small commercial applications, you're looking at a hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollars. And they also may include an annual subscription. And that would be included in the rebate maximum. So you get up to two hundred dollars for each of these devices. And if you had a subscription, say, you buy one for a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, and there's a fifty-dollar annual subscription, then we would go ahead and rebate that full two hundred dollars. You will be getting resolution at the December board meeting that will adopt that rebate amount. So it's not part of this ordinance. It's it's part of a rebate table. Next, please. The Water Demand Committee reviewed and supported the proposed ordinance. And this evening, the board should receive public comment before approving the first reading of ordinance number one eighty-nine. Second reading is scheduled for the December fifteenth board meeting, and the effective date is proposed to be January first, twenty twenty-two. And that way, we can get the rebate information out timely and have it have a good cutoff date to start doing things differently. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any more questions or stuff? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. So Stephanie, is there any reason, this looks like sort of cleanup stuff, stuff. Is there any reason why we're doing it right now? Is there any pending dates or anything that I wish this needs to be done?
Not really, no. It's, I have a lengthy list of items like this that need to be addressed. And we've been asked to bring them forward, so just trying to trying to start clearing things off a little bit.
Good, thanks. I thought that was it, but I just wanted to be sure I wasn't missing something. And then will this have any impact on any permit applications that are going on at this point?
Yeah, the only permit application that I'm aware of that would have any effect, the board approved a special circumstances for the American Ten Canary Hotel Project in October of, October fifteenth, twenty eighteen. And as part of that request, they had included the relocation of their onsite laundry as part of their different, different proposals to reduce water use on the site. And I think that because the board unanimously had approved it at that time, that we would allow that project to go forward with that approval. And then, but it would apply to any future projects that came in.
So sort of like being grandfathered in.
Yes. And and in fact, it's, if you think about a couple of things that have happened in our recent past, the concept of taking laundry off-site is easy to give a credit for or address one time, but it's hard to know when that laundry's been brought back into the district. And so it's it's one of those enforcement challenges. Another example would be when we had a, call it a juice bar, but the the Boba T-bar, say that they were gonna bring all their ice in from Santa Cruz on a regular basis. Very difficult to police where the ice is coming from. And so the the idea is to kind of close some of these open doors, if if you will.
To make it hard for us to be able to enforce.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
Director Anderson, you had your hand out. Go ahead.
I did. I just have a couple of questions about the smart flow meters. Now, those, those are simple enough for somebody who's handy with a wrench to apply.
They sure are, yes.
Okay. It says you have to get authorization from the water distribution system operator.
If if it is on the meter. So in other words, if you're, if you're installing a device on Cal Am's meter, they should be notified about that, yes.
And they come out and check that they're done right and all that business like you do.
They would be involved in, yes, they would be involved in making sure that everything was correct.
Thank you.
Director Malik, I thought you had your hand up. Do you have any questions, Director Malik?
No, I don't.
All right, sir. Mayor, any questions?
Yes, a couple. I know seventy-five dollars versus a fifty-dollar rebate for a new toilet seems unconsequent inconsequential. However, in my experience, whenever we're looking at twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars, it it could be a big issue to the consumer. So the rationale, I understand the rationale behind the fact that if someone replaces a toilet, it's, it has to be a new, a new high efficiency. Does the seventy-five versus fifty-dollar delta, does that encourage people to retrofit? Because that's who you're after, really. Or is it a wash? Or couldn't one make a case that you shouldn't rebate it at all?
All of the above. No, I I think all of that makes perfect sense. I'm I'm not sure that it's much of a motivator for somebody to, I mean, you you have no choice. If you have to replace a toilet, you have to put in those toilets. And what, you know, and a lot of times we see rebates rebate applications for toilets that are actually for homes that are on the market for sale and will be required to do so or have just recently sold. And the property owner's trying to get the rebate. They don't qualify for the rebate. But that that is, you know, unless you're really checking that, it's entirely possible that a lot of our rebates are going out to properties that would be required to do that anyway.
Right, so I mean, it's
So it's a board decision.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's a significant enough difference to even pursue, just leave it as is. I don't know, so we can discuss it later. Then the flow meter, I think I'm glad Amy asked the question, Director Anderson asked the question, because the flow meters have a lot of potential, I think, to cut down waste. And so there's a question of where one installs it. Could you put in more than one, for example, on irrigation system and then your main line?
Yes.
And would you get a double rebate if you put in two flow meters, I wonder?
You know, that actually is a good question. I did not address that as part of this ordinance. It could be dealt with when we bring the resolution forward. And I think that's, that is a question for the board. I didn't put a restriction on the number. Maybe we restrict it to five or something. It's, I think it's very beneficial, and yes, you can put it on both your incoming homes, home line. You can put it on your irrigation system. You could put it any number of different places to be useful.
Yeah, it, you know, kind of depends how granular you want to get. We did allow, you know, sub-metering at the Trader Joe's site in downtown Monterey. And the the landlord can use that information to to kind of track where water's going. The the concept here was, on your side of the meter, if you had one flow meter, then you'd at least know if things are flowing in a manner that's counter to your own
Right.
sense of use. If you want more information, you know, want to segment your own home to the irrigation or to the the house or to the ADU, if you, you know, if you have one. Yeah, I think we need to probably draw the line, but we'll have that internal discussion because, you know, it's, I think it's a benefit if it's in a single location on the property owner's side of the meter. But more granular information may not be worth us paying for.
I was just thinking that I would would guess, even in my experience, the most water problems have been irrigation systems because they'll pop, they'll pop an emitter or the little brain stops. But if you had it on your main line, it would register anyway. You would know something was wrong.
Right.
Yeah, because we had, at our house, we had a miniscule, tiny, tiny leak that didn't show on my water bill, et cetera, until finally the ground got so saturated that water started to come up out of the water meter. And unfortunately, it was on my side of the water meter.
Yeah.
But that would have been caught a long time ago. It was really inconsequential because it was a drip. However, I think the potential there is really good. And we, as a district, at where Cal Am, will there be an effort to educate the public on the availability of these? I think at the Water Demand Committee, didn't we look at the various companies that provide these? I would think that would be a good outreach as part of the plan.
Yes, and I think Cal, I met with Cal Am Conservation Staff. And yeah, we're we're definitely interested in promoting the the benefit.
As always, thanks for the great answers.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Director R.
I have two questions. One is the flow meter discussion is interesting. Is there an overlap in the purpose of the AMI meters that are, have been discussed previously and this flow meter use?
Somewhat and somewhat not. So the the AMI meters are not going to be installed anytime in probably the next year, two years. I mean, there's, there will be a delay between approval of the general rate case and the installation of the system. Between now and then, absolutely, these are helpful because any leak that occurs, you're notifying the customer that there's a problem. The AMI metering doesn't give you down-to-the-minute information, which the system will be doing. You know, these these types of flow meters give you information at your fingertips, so to speak. And when we get to the system-wide metering, that's more of a system that's a two-way communication between the water company and the customer. And, you know, it may involve the water company having to be the one who notifies you. It may take a couple of days to get that information back and forth. Whereas these devices are something that you utilize for your benefit and you're getting that benefit on a real-time basis.
Okay, thank you for that. My, my second question, it goes to the water distribution system permit change that you were proposing. I was intrigued by one sentence in that staff report. It says the, the division of drinking water has been critical of small water distribution systems that may not have adequate long-term water supply. Now, the reason this, the reason this triggered my thought is that we're tired of being micromanaged by others. Is this another way that the state water board kind of sticks their nose in? Is it something that's valid? I mean, I'm not questioning about it's valid. That's, that's the wrong question. Is this, is, is this something that we do because it's good management? Or is there something we do because the state water board wants it? And that's kind of my question.
Dave, do you want to answer this?
Yeah, I was, I was going to jump in there. The, the second part's the easier one to answer. It's something that we're codifying because the state board is sticking their nose into this. And so we're trying to at least make it better understood. But let me give you a couple of examples of, Gharapata is a very good example, where the system was in disrepair. It was locally owned and operated as a mutual. And when people first get started, or developer first gets started, they like to create, you know, a little mutual water company. And then the residents get tired of being on it, don't reserve enough money to do renewal and replacement. And you can end up having water quality problems with high-cost infrastructure, insufficient funds to, to fund it. And so the Division of Drinking Water, using their concerns over safe drinking water, not necessarily affordable, but safe drinking water, has said, this is a concern to us. So there's a little 26-unit proposal in the city of Monterey, down, Stephanie, what street was that?
Casanova or Ramona or somewhere.
Yeah, the Casanova neighborhood. And they were going to sink a well and serve it directly in the State Division of Drinking Water. So we don't like that idea. You're, A, you also need certified operators. So you have to ensure that you're going to have certification, which means you're going to have to hire a third party that has a certification. September Ranch, they didn't like the onsite treatment proposal. So they encouraged September Ranch to cut a deal with California American to actually operate it. And this is just something that, that's happened in really the last five years. And they enter into all of the discussion. And they even have now come up with a, kind of a guideline for prospective developers to identify alternate water supply sources and operations first, before even considering a new mutual or, or an individual water distribution system off their own well, that type of thing. And it's all, it's all just about water quality. So the answer is, we're trying to rate, heighten the warning so that fewer developers go, I can put in 10 houses, we'll service off this one well over here. It'll be good to go.
Well, and, and the staff time that's involved in pre-applications and talking to these people, they need to know that their first step is really going through the Division of Drinking Water.
And fifteen or more connections triggers, you know, the definition of a public water system. So that gets it into their purview, or they relegate it to the county health authorities, but it's still the same regulatory framework. And so they just, they, they've really come out and said, we don't like these small systems.
Well, it, it seemed like when there is a development, and this is the arrangement for water infrastructure, it's only a matter of time before, you know, people who are excited in the beginning are kind of more routine later and not as energized to do whatever it was. I just seem like it's an evolutionary thing over time, that, that the water district, those, those that have responsibility for water safety will face, that's all. So, thank you.
Any other board questions? Okay, a couple from, from me there. Stephanie, rebate money, where do it come from?
And the Cal-Am customers pay in to, actually, at this point, with the new general rate case, it'll be part of their operating budget. And in the past, it's been collected as a separate conservation surcharge that goes toward various conservation activities.
From the Cal-Am customers, right?
Rate payers pay for, yes. So the rate payers are paying for the Cal-Am system. The Water Management District budget separately for the non-Cal-Am systems. And so the district pays for, for customers that are not in Cal-Am.
Okay. I think that cost should be ran through the committee. I like what the mayor was saying on some of that. Well, we need to, those costs and those other costs that he was talking about should be run through the committee. So I hope we have a meeting in December before this go back to the full board. You know, fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars. If the customer is paying for it, I, I think they want to get the most of their money. If they can't bang for the buck, then us cutting it down for them. So I think we need to discuss that. Any other board questions? If not, let's open up to the public, three minutes each.
Go ahead, you. Would like to make public comment on item number 13. Please raise your hand or push star nine if you're dialing in. Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, if no more discussion, I need a motion and a second for the first reading. Thank you, Director Adams.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Director Anderson, you got to speak up. Okay, okay. We had first by Director Adams and the second by Mayor Clyde. All right. No discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pa?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Aye.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven, zero. Thank you. Next item, GM, I believe is actual items.
Yep. Before we get into item 14, back on the last item, I just want to reiterate that this, any rebate discussion, it's not new money. It's going to fit within the existing rebate budget for the current fiscal year. So it's just, you know, a trade-off between other rebatable items and flow meters. So it's, it's not like we're increasing the budget to make rebates for that. And then secondly, in the General Managers' Report, I forgot to report that we will be accepting statements of interest for members of our public who want to serve on the district's redistricting commission. We're trying to fill those slots with one volunteer in each division and two at-large volunteers. And there will be more information forthcoming in the next week or two. So now moving to item 14, consider authorization of additional expenditure for LAFCO process related to Measure J, the Monterey Water System Acquisition. This is related to an invoice received from LAFCO a week or two ago, requesting a payment of ninety-nine point eight thousand dollars of additional payment. We've already authorized eighty thousand for LAFCO processing costs. And then in July, you authorize an additional seventy thousand for the third-party consultant review. In the staff note, I broke the two categories out, processing and the consultant. And what can be noted is, on the processing side, what we have paid is less than what they have incurred. So they're requesting fourteen thousand, excuse me, fourteen thousand eight hundred and three dollars of payment. We have a little bit of remaining authorization, about eighty-six hundred dollars. So even to pay that bill, we would need your additional authorization today. LAFCO has estimated that over the next three months, there would be an additional sixty-five hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-five thousand, big difference, of additional processing costs for the application. And they would like to see that paid in advance as part of that ninety-nine thousand dollar payment. There will also be some pass-through costs for the State Board of Equalization on our legal description for the 58 properties that will be annexed. And there may be some Department of Fish and Wildlife review. We're unclear on that one. We know for sure the State Board of Equalization will be required. Our survey crew has looked at the fee schedule and thinks it's going to be on the order of thirty-eight hundred to four thousand. But to be safe, we've penciled in seventy-five hundred. On the consultant, the third-party review, billings to date does not even meet or exceed the district amount paid to date. So there's still a surplus in the hands of LAFCO. Yet they're requesting an additional twenty thousand, which is the contingency, to be paid. But we haven't heard, heard a clear description of what services are being asked of the third-party consultant that would require that contingency over and above the surplus remaining to date. So what we're asking is that you do approve an increase in the authorization that would be adequate to meet most of the, if not all, the future costs in the process. But we have some reservations about the size of prepayment. You know, typically, when we do an application, a seventy-five hundred dollar or seventy-two hundred dollar prepayment is normal. But in this case, prepaying really eighty-five thousand dollars without a clear statement of hours or services seems a little excessive. So the request, the recommendation is that you authorize up to ninety thousand dollars of additional authority over what you've already authorized. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on whether all or some or none of it should be prepaid. And, you know, one of the choices would be to ask for monthly invoices instead of accumulated multi-month invoices, and then a request for another multi-month prepayment. That is pretty much my report and recommendation.
Okay, Director Malik, you have your hand up. You can go first.
I have a number of questions. Number one, in July, I believe, we have approved a fifty thousand and a twenty thousand contingency.
Correct.
What happened to the twenty thousand contingency?
Right. It still sits in our pocket. They requested it in their invoice on October 28th. But again, we hadn't even expended the first full fifty thousand of authorization. So I guess they are anticipating that the full contingency will be needed. I have not seen enough work assigned to that to be fully needed. And I see really no problem in their consultant invoicing LAFCO and LAFCO turning around and invoicing us, and then us paying for the actual work performed. But as of right now, you know, we, we have that money.
Do we get to see the consultant's invoice, or that is private between consultant and LAFCO?
Yeah, we do not. We have not seen the consultant's invoice. We have seen what looks like just a pass-through. I mean, they're, you know, they're not nice round numbers. They're, it looks like just a, you know, they get a monthly invoice and they put it on their invoice for us. So, but we have not seen the, the direct, unless Suresh wants to weigh in. I don't think he's seeing that detail.
No, you, you're right, Dave. We do not get their third-party consultant invoices.
Okay. Do we have the right to ask for the backup? Since this is our money that we have advanced on for the, for them using a consultant?
Well, I think we can ask.
And then, what is the ninety thousand dollars they asking for right now? What, what do they say they need it for?
Right. So it's the ninety-nine point eight is, is basically sixty-five thousand of expected future processing costs. The twenty thousand that we've already authorized of future third-party consultant costs. And fourteen thousand eight hundred and three dollars worth of expenses incurred to date that we've not yet paid for.
Since this is our money, I assume you're not assume, I, I want to be certain that they fully account for all these expenses. That's number one. Number two, just like you said, Dave, we do not want to pay advance until we see what the billing is. Yeah, I mean, this is public hearing, and I don't want to call people names, but it, it, they are completely irresponsible about their demands of the district on one side, and they're delaying the approval on the other. And demanding money, our money, for them to continue dragging their heels. So I, I don't know what, what incentive we demand from them before we send them any more money. And if we, the last question I have is, what are the ramifications of us declining the request?
Yeah, let me take, take that in two parts. The ramifications of declining would, declining to pay the processing costs would put the brakes on the whole application. So we, we basically need to authorize additional monies to, to foot the bill. And that's not unlike when we have permit applicants and we charge them for the legal review or the water rights review and the hours engaged. So they're, you know, we're passing many of our costs through to the permit applicant. It just never reaches the magnitude that you're seeing here. So we need to authorize something. The ramifications of saying we're not going to prepay without seeing a monthly invoice, I think, are small. You know, we have a history of paying. We pay our bills. That's how we treat almost every other vendor. And we did prepay to get the process started. And as best we can tell, all of their staff collect their paychecks on time. So they have the ability to, you know, cover float, if you will. So I, I don't think that it will unduly affect their ability to put the hours in, pay their people, and move forward if we pay based on a, a monthly invoice.
All right, Director Anderson, I see your hand up.
I'm just wondering, how often are we getting invoices now? Only one particular charge comes through? Are we getting them?
Yeah, so pretty infrequent. The, the one that was October 28th, the previous one was in June. And, and that included some prepayment in addition. So if you look at the invoice from the 28th, there's the, the June expenses, the July, August, September, and, yeah, I guess it just went through September. So, you know, if they're incurring significant costs, they just need to invoice us, you know, at the end of the month. And we'll turn it around within, you know, net thirty, and they'll get paid.
Hey, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yes, I support moving to a basis where we get monthly invoices and we pay the monthly invoices. It seems like a better, we should try to get on that footing with them. Two-hundred-forty-thousand dollars is a lot of money and the source of it in the end is the ratepayers. So we, you know, we you know, we, this is a lot of money and, you know, at the very least, we should have a good information about what it's being used for. And especially if we're asked to prepay, I would want more information about what the prepayment is for exactly, what they anticipate. For example, you know, the processing costs, well, that's a big bucket. What's in it, you know? So I would, I'd support trying to work out with LAFCO that we get monthly invoices and we pay as the services are provided.
Okay, any other question? Go ahead, Director Al.
Yeah, I support the idea of advancing, giving advance approval or advance allocation, just so the money's set aside and we're aware of it. But actually paying the money should be based on invoices. That's the normal business. I understand that this is a unique process for LAFCO. It's a unique process for the district. That doesn't mean that we waive all common sense about how we approach the money. And it is true. I think Director Paul is absolutely right. This falls back on the ratepayer ultimately. So I'm not in favor of advanced payments unless there's some analytical reason and management reason why it makes sense. But just to have a policy that, yeah, we're going to make advanced payments? No, I don't think so. I prefer to see a monthly approach to this. But having the allocation in advance is proof that we're serious about paying our bills. So there shouldn't be any problem with LAFCO about that process.
Any other board questions? Okay, go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. I agree with the comments that have been made so far, but I'm just kind of wondering, did we have any discussions with LAFCO at the beginning of this? Talking about this process or any potential scenarios for the length of time or or the amount of work that might have been needed?
No, none of us could have anticipated the amount of time and staff hours that have gone into this. I mean, I anticipated a big number, but not two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar number. And I must tell you that you know, sixty-five-thousand for time involved in processing through the end of December. Well, we're almost to the beginning of December now. And Dave Laredo can attest, we've had countless calls and they've had to review a lot of material. The hours that they have to put in to read four-hundred pages of a submittal, you know, that's, those are ours. They're real and we're paying for it. But yeah, we did not have a, hey, let me see your scope of work and your timeline because I don't think they could have predicted and certainly the way things had played out, the continuance to December from the October twenty-fifth meeting was unexpected. The response, the fourteen-page letter Dave Laredo alluded to earlier that went in this morning. They have to read all fourteen pages and then see if it matches up with the four-hundred pages that they were looking for comment on. And, you know, it's, it is what it is. I mean, we are beholden to them to do their work to enable us to do our work. So.
So, yeah, it doesn't seem fair. But I'm just wondering, considering this policy, the idea of prepayment, is this their policy or is this something different?
No, it has been their policy. They typically take, you know, an application fee upfront to get them started and then do some billings. But as you can imagine, we want to manage our cash flow as well and we don't want to be the bank. We've gotten into the stratosphere in terms of requests. You know, when we did the thirty-nine-thousand before, a piece of it was retrospective and a piece of it was prospective. But this one's got eighty-five-thousand of prospective money in it and you know, we could be done by the end of December. So it's, you know, I don't, and I know they're good actors. They would return the unexpended proceeds, but that that could take time too. And so, you know, who wants to be the float? You know, should we be the bank or should they be the bank? We now know enough to know that they still do their work and they will get paid. So it's it's unfortunate all around. I don't want to be the bad guy and say, no, we can't prepay you if that's their expectation, but we've, we're getting close to the end and I don't want to have to be the one that waits a couple of months for a refund.
Right. No. So could, I know that we've been talking about now requesting a monthly, paying monthly, but if they are reluctant to do that, could we simply ask to have a payment schedule? So that we are able to just, you know, know exactly what's going to be coming up and be prepared for that. But I agree, we should definitely allocate the money ahead of time so they know we're serious about paying our bills. And thank you so much for all the comments. I think it's really been helpful.
All right, Vice Chair, go ahead.
So that this, no, of course, if staff receives, you know, four-hundred pages, they they're, they take their responsibility seriously. Of course, they have to, they feel they have to look at it, but has LAFCO set a deadline, a cutoff date for submissions of additional? Or can this go on indefinitely? Another, what if, what if there's another four-hundred pages that arrives a few days before the December sixth hearing? Don't they normally set a cutoff date?
Dave, you've asked them that question. I think we did not get the answer we were looking for, but.
That's correct. We have not gotten an answer, but at the same time, they have told us that they're not going to be continuing or recommending that this be continued. So I think that we would have a basis to argue that any substantial information should only be received if it was new information that could not, through due diligence, have been produced in advance. And I do want to point out, I think that giving a substantial unearned advance without a clear projection from LAFCO as to why that amount needs to be spent does border on gift of public funds. You know, there's no question, we owe the money if it's earned. But if they cannot tell us what the amount is, then I am fearful that a substantial advance payment would be put the district in jeopardy.
Okay, Mr. Laredo, GM or Mr. Laredo? Annex the annexation of the fifty-eight parcels. We gave some money to GPS to do some work for the state. What? Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so we've got an invoice that came in today for, I think it's twenty-nine-thousand, which is just a couple hundred dollars beneath the authorized amount. They've mapped and then created a legal description and that's the hard part is the legal description with, you know, compass points and feet and directions and so forth for the two annexation areas. And then that gets filed actually by LAFCO as part of their completion packet to the State Board of Equalization. And so the State Board of Equalization then will assess a fee that LAFCO will pay on our behalf. So we will, you know, we'll have that as a pass-through that has been calculated in here. But yeah, so we've we've now completed that project. I'm reviewing it to make sure it looks like it makes sense. And then we'll go ahead and accept the work product, make it available to LAFCO and include in their package to the state.
Okay. I have some more thoughts, but any other directors? If not, Joel, let's take it out to the public for comment three minutes.
Yes, Sarah. So please prepare the timer. So if you have any public comment on this matter, please raise your hand or if you're dialing in or star nine. And at this time, I would like to invite Susan Skilavoni. Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. I want to support that you certainly allocate the money in advance, but I totally support you not paying this until you get invoices for what's been done. And the costs do fall on the ratepayers. So just the fact that you would give that much money away and you're losing interest on it or whatever, it's right. You're playing bank for somebody else. And it's not correct. And I wouldn't want to have any blowback legally for the board to deal with either. And there may be some reasons that that would serve other people's purposes. So I really do support that you approve the advance, but don't pay the bill till the work's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And at this time, seeing no raised hands, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
So what I'm hearing then is our request is that the board authorize staff to continue paying LAFCO fees and pass-throughs in an amount not to exceed an additional ninety-thousand dollars. And such fees shall be paid upon presentation of an invoice periodically, preferably monthly, but not in advance.
I so move. I was about to say, that's a good one. That's a good one there, General Manager. But I need that a motion made by a director. I think George accepted that. I think I think Amy, Director Anderson, she beat you that one. She seconded it. So we've got a motion by Director Riley and a second by Director Anderson. Comments on the motion? If none, I'm going to give you my comments. I'm going to support it. It's hard for me to support something that already said that seventy-thousand dollars is enough. It comes to a point of overreach. And I think we reached that. We bypassed overreach. Now we're going full speed. So I'm going to support it. But hey, it has to stop somewhere. No city have to go through what we did, what we're going through for fifty-eight acre, fifty-eight parcels. We're asking to buy a company. No city, if it was going to annex property out there, how are you going to pay for it? Or what you going to do? I think it's no difference because we asked them to buy a company. And we sitting up there with, I think we got bank approval. If not, I hope we get it. But we just asked them to buy a company and we're going through too much just to ask that question. That's for me. We're going through too much. Two-hundred-and-twenty-some-thousand dollars. That's two-hundred-and-forty-some. That's too much. Too much. We paying more for this than we almost paid for the general study. So I got that off my chest. I'm telling you, it needs to stop and it's going to stop. Okay, go ahead, Director Malik.
Is there a way we can put your words in emotion in a professional manner? No, I'm dead serious. I'm not being funny. I.
I know, but you can't twist that around. It's on the record. So it's just going to come back to the board. We're going to have to make a decision. Do we continue on or do we stop?
I just need to send a firm reply to LAFCO's continued demands. And that we, this is not our money individually. This is ratepayers money. And we are being the guardians of that money. And we cannot just willy-nilly hand it over, just like a spoiled kid come to come to his father saying, Daddy, I need to buy whatever. Oh, yeah, honey, here. How much do you want? Here, take it. It just, this does not happen in professional environments, be it governmental or corporate or any business for that matter. There's got to be some limitation and some accountability. So how do we amend that motion to put some teeth into it?
Any suggestion? General Counsel, I always look at you. So what do you think? Before we go to the GM?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you said it yourself. That everything that's been said is on the record here. And I am really hesitant to suggest specific language for fear that it would end up halting the process and becoming a new obstacle to overcome. There's no question, we can only pay for actual costs and services that are rendered. We should not prepay. We can ask for audits if necessary. We have a right to find out what was, what the monies were spent for and we can have a right to contest it if we think that they were improperly expended. We don't need to put that into a motion, sir.
Yeah, we can, but we will and can include in our letter for when we pay the arrearsage. So monies that are due for work that's actually happened. We will lay out what the ground rules are going forward and we can include a little bit of our expectation language. I'll work with Suresh on that.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, it may, in order to at least, well, I think we all feel like we are trustees of what is essentially ratepayered money and we have a obligation to to prevent unreasonable expenditure of those funds. And that's why I suggested, I think, I think we can really press LAFCO again, if necessary, to set a cutoff date. So because you know, that will at least contain the costs and not allow the cost to be driven up again unnecessarily by another, you know, delivery of four-hundred-page pile of papers.
Okay, just in closing, Director Malik, I appreciate what you were trying to do. I appreciate it. I know how you voted on that seventy-thousand dollars. But we got to finish this process some way. And I think we at that point of finishing that process. So I appreciate your thoughts. Okay, Mary, you have anything?
I hope you're as optimistic as you sound.
Well, I am because I'm ready to say, stop it, but the public won't let me say stop it because we invested too much into it to stop it. Mary, any comments?
No, I'm in agreement with the motion. It makes a lot of sense.
All right, sir. All right, question. Call it. All right, roll call, please.
Director Riley?
Well said, Chairman. I vote yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Agreed, yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item?
So the next item for which Jen Hunter of the University of California, Berkeley Hastings Reserve has been patiently awaiting as an attendee. Joel, I guess you could move her over to participant if she has anything she wants to say, but it's relatively straightforward. We made a hundred-thousand-dollar grant, a planning grant, if you will, to the project to UC Berkeley for design and permitting work, which has been completed. We also agreed to let the University of California, Berkeley use We also agreed to let the University of California Berkeley use any remaining funds after the design phase toward construction. There's still just under ten thousand dollars in unobligated funds, but the way we set up the grant, it was set to expire the end of this, our next month, December thirty first, twenty twenty one. There's a letter in your packet where they are requesting an extension of time. And the recommendation to our board is to extend the time for that use until December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Even though we're all very hopeful that construction commences and the project gets done. Way before that, but that's just to provide time for supply chain issues and weather and things like that, so. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
And let's call on Jen Hunter if she has anything she'd like to say.
Hi, I'm, it's, it's nice to be back with you guys again, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the progress that we've made here. So we were given this, this grant in March of twenty twenty, just before the pandemic hit, which caused a few delays on our end, and as we were coming out of that sort of horizon, we nearly burned down in a fire in August twenty twenty, so we had kind of a slow start. But in, in October twenty twenty, we signed contracts with the, the Resource Conservation District of Monterey County and a consulting company called Waterways. And to do the design and permitting work for the replacing the, the fish passage barrier at Hastings. And so we've got quite a, a long way with that process. We're just actually tomorrow by five PM, I have to submit my grant proposal to the State Coastal Conservancy for internal review to request the full cost of construction funds. So we've had preliminary support from the Coastal Conservancy to pay for the, the balance on the construction. And it's just pending a board review, which hopefully we'll have in February. Which would mean we would have money to do the actual construction project in April twenty twenty two. And we're very hopeful that we could get that done, that work done over summer twenty twenty two. And the only reason we ask just for that extra year is in case we have some other unpredictable calamity that happens in that intervening time, so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. So, in here.
All right, board members, any questions of the applicant? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Just kind of reading through everything, are we in jeopardy of losing any of the, of the funding at this point? The ten thousand dollars particularly?
Well, the grant, the end of the grant period is December thirty first, and so if I don't get approval from you guys to extend it. Then we would have to wrap up any invoices by end of January, and then whatever hasn't been invoiced would come back to the, the Water Management District.
Thank you.
We might need that to play Laughco. Okay. Just a joke, okay. Any other questions on the applicant? If not, we're going to take it to the public, three minutes.
So if you would like to make public comment on item number fifteen, please raise your hand or if you're calling in or star nine. Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I need a motion in a second. Okay, Director Anderson, I see your hand up there, I guess you're making a motion.
I had my hand up before for just a quick comment, a quick comment, it looks like a great project. Thank you for doing this, and I will make a motion that we accept this extension of time, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, I'll give you a second on, I'll give you a second on that motion. Okay, Director Adams?
Do we have a time certain, like extended to December thirty one, twenty twenty three?
That would be my preference, yeah.
That was in there.
It was in motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Well, no, no, it was in the staff report to December.
Yeah.
Thirty first, twenty twenty three.
I think maybe we should amend the motion to ensure that we include the date then, if that would be acceptable to make.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Second, I agree with that. All right, roll call vote.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Director Malik?
Yep.
Director Adams?
Hi.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
All right there, young lady, good luck again.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, we'll keep you guys posted.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's next, GM?
Yeah, and just right before we get to sixteen. In the recommended action in the board agenda for item fifteen. It incorrectly stated that it was an IRWM grant, it was just a blanket district local grant. Did not come out of the Integrated Regional Water Management Funding, so clarification. So item sixteen is to consider approval of Amendment Six to the Cost Sharing Agreement with Monterey One Water for Pure Water Monterey Expansion. This relates to a report given by District Council earlier that we're expecting a one-page memorandum of understanding to be signed this week. That in effect says if the Public Utilities Commission approves the form of water purchase agreement that we've all agreed to. And allows for recovery of purchased water costs and rates, that all the parties will sign the water purchase agreement. So the MOU is an agreement to agree. But that gives us the confidence that we can then begin spending preconstruction costs. It's the same relationship that we've had previously where the district is the, the deeper pocket for preconstruction costs. And the Monterey One Water will be the ones to go out and get permanent construction financing. If, if either the state revolving fund does not work out or is insufficient. And the federal WIFIA program does not work out or is insufficient, then we may assist in terms of a public borrowing. But that would not be necessarily putting us on the hook for any additional funds, it would just be financing, but that will cross that bridge when we get to it. So I, I do want to show you what's been going on with Pure Water Monterey Financing. Joel has one PDF for this item that I'd like you to see. So this is all the expenditures by the district to date on the project and its expansion. I've broken it into the base project and the expansion and the total. And what you can see is to date, we've spent about seventeen point seven million on the base project. Or I should say spent or authorized. The two point nine million is the remainder in the budget that you authorized for the deep injection well. Expansion, deep injection well number four. So it, it may come in lower and then it, it won't be the full seventeen point seven. We, we did however, receive reimbursement monies from the state revolving fund. Four point eight million, which makes the district net out of pocket the twelve point nine million dollar figure. For the expansion, what's been expended to date was our share of the supplemental environmental impact report and some permitting work. You may recall, we authorized an overall one million for that, almost, you know, we're coming up on almost three years. Two years, sorry about that, but there was a year delay in the approval of the SEIR. The remaining budget reflects preconstruction costs through the, the funding agreement date projected to be a little bit over. Boy, I think it's like September of next year. And this is seventy five percent of the preconstruction costs that will be incurred. So the, the actual soft costs for the expansion project totaled to about sixteen million. But once the funding agreement is in place. All the soft costs going forward, about eleven million worth, will be covered from the loan proceeds or the borrowing or, or whatever the, the permanent funding is. So prior to that time, there's about five point one million, five point seven million, I guess. Of which our share would be four million forty three thousand, so the total for the expansion out of pocket would be four point eight million, and we might get some of that reimbursed. It is reimbursable in the state revolving fund program. So next month, we'll bring forward a reimbursement resolution to ensure that we can pay ourselves back if we are fortunate enough to do so. And then you can see the total column where the two are, are put together. And it will show that current expectations are that we will, we will have used, you know, seventeen point seven million of district proceeds on just the, the, the preconstruction design permitting costs of the project and the expanded project.
Okay.
Yep.
Any board questions? On this item? So, so a question from me. I see in the staff report, we got one point two million. Do we have that money on hand or do we have to go to the piggy bank or?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great statement, we have that money on hand, that's what was budgeted, has not been expended. And the remaining budget of four million is what is actually going to be needed. And that will span over two fiscal years, so at the mid-year budget in January, there will be more money that we will need to budget towards the costs that will, that we will incur in the remainder of the fiscal year. And we'll bring that back to you in the mid-year budget adjustment, that money will have to come from the piggy bank. Anything that rolls over to the next fiscal year will be in the next fiscal year budget, but yeah, we only have one point two of the four million. And we didn't, at the time, we didn't know if we were going to be moving on this project or not, so. You know, obviously, we, we didn't budget enough now that we're lucky enough to be moving ahead on the expansion.
All right, Director Riley?
And assuming everything goes the way we want it to or the way it appears to be. Would the, would it be in rates for twenty, early twenty twenty four? Is that about the target?
Yeah, I think that we keep saying it's about a thirty month project. The current water purchase agreement envisions. Boy, I think it's April of twenty twenty four as the start date, and I, you'd have to check me on that, but we, we are definitely into twenty twenty four.
Okay.
But it could be sooner, you know, if, if we get moving and you know, what's thirty months from today, it's actually not even thirty, it's more like twenty eight months or twenty six months, but if we've learned anything through COVID and supply chain issues and what have you, that, you know, don't, don't estimate on the short end of your timeline.
Okay, any other questions? I have no other questions, let's open up to the public.
Yes, so if you would like to make public comment on item number sixteen, please raise your hand or if you're calling in, push star nine. Sarah, please prepare the timer, and at this time, I would like to invite John Tilly, John Tilly, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel, hey, just wanted to congratulate everybody on the cooperations happening between the district, between M one W, between Cal AM. Things are pretty fragile with water supply and the things that are being worked on and that expenses are happening are really appreciated and useful. Just recently, in this conversation, they pointed out that there are authorized expenses that haven't been paid yet. But that are queued up for future expenses, that seems to apply very clearly to the lack of discussion just a few minutes ago. So what is the policy of the board? You know, you do pay for sometimes. In terms of the, the graph that was presented on expenses, supplying water. And that only use water supply charge as a revenue source, I think it's time to expand it to both user fee and the water supply charge. It just makes sense, both there, they've both been collected and both used for various reasons, so limiting that question, that analysis to the water supply charges doesn't really address the revenue sources in place to cover it. Lastly, there was also an expense earlier tonight, that was the money that was paid for the Raftelus report. Those, those expenses have been expended, it's time to bring that report forward to Laughco, I'm not sure if that was done, and I was curious about it. And what was given in twenty nineteen in terms of the desktop appraisal, desktop valuation. You refined that, you made it better, you brought it more current, made it more expansive. It's much, much better information that was presented from a year earlier, that was just a precursor to evaluation of the purchase, so. I hope that was given to the Laughco folks that they can really complete their list of things that they want to do to make this a, a complete process that lives up to the measure J, a spirit. Of doing analysis to see if this is the right thing to do, thank you so much, thanks for your hard work, good night.
Thank you, John. Chair Edwards, same with no hands raised, I'll return this back to the board.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? If none, I need a motion and I need a second.
I make a motion.
I got a motion by Director Mount, wait a second there. Ain't got a second from Mayor Clyde, all right. Anything else on it in the comments? If none, roll call vote.
Director Malik?
Yep.
Director Adams?
Hi.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Our next item, discussion, are we in discussion items?
We are, and I'm going to try to be brief on both fronts if I can. The first one is San City Desal replacement well. I want to bring to your attention that as long ago as, two years ago. We had in a general rate case submittal, said that we were generally not supportive of the rate payers paying for replacement wells, consistent with a previous CPUC decision. We've changed our tune because with the progress of time and the advent of the cease and desist order, ratcheting down withdrawals from the river starting December thirty first. Every little drop counts and the desalination facility should be restored to whatever capacity we can get out of it. And it's had, you know, a little, little bit of spotty history, so. By way of background, it's fed by four brackish groundwater intake wells located in the beach at San City, and the salinity in all of those have increased. Higher salinity means it's difficult to meet the waste discharge permits upon running it through the process and the level of salinity that needs to be in the outfall water, and when I say outfall discharge water, which is also discharged into the beach sands. So a, a study's been done to find a suitable site for a new well with a lower salinity level. This would be roughly the intersection of West Bay Street and Sand Dune Drive. It's thought that it can produce, produce anywhere from two hundred to three hundred gallons per minute. If it works really well, then maybe no additional wells would be sought. But also if it works really well and has the level of salinity that's desired, but doesn't have the production that's desired, then maybe a second well would follow, but at this point in time, it's for a single well. And with a new pump motor, electrical controls and, and the connection to the system. They already have Coastal Commission approval. Which has been there since February of last year. It's about an eleven month schedule and about one point two million dollars. Again, we now support this from a water supply stability mode, it's going to be very much needed for the next thirty to thirty six months. While Pure Water Monterey Expansion is being developed and coming online. But it will also be useful past that point as additional buffer and supplies to to provide the comfort that folks are looking for, that we're not living on the edge, if, if you will, so. I'm looking for just a, a general direction from the board that you kind of support this. The Water Supply Planning Committee did meet November. November 1st and unanimously pledged its support to this one well project. Our support to the Public Utilities Commission was to support recovery in rates and putting them on notice that the very narrow water supply mathematics right now makes it very important to do so. So this is just an informational item, but available for questions if you have them for folks who weren't part of the Water Supply Planning Committee.
Any board questions on this item?
I have.
Go ahead, Director Ralph.
The question about the payment for the, actually, the new well. Is this all going to be on Cal AM's bill or will the city of San City have some obligation on around the cost?
Yeah, it'll be on Cal AM's bill. The way the lease is structured, you know, there, there are payments that were locked in stone. It was a little front-loaded, but the company is on the hook for O and M, some renewal and replacement, some capital, which then they put into the rate base. The, the company has a well replacement program. It is a line item in the general rate case. They're going to attempt to get a decision by the commission to utilize funds in that well replacement program category. But yeah, the city of San City is not in a great position to step up with their own money right now. The, the agreement between the city and the company would allow it and the company, of course, has privilege to ask for rate basing of capital investment that supports its water supply in general. So I think it, it all works, but it's all Cal AM ratepayers.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Director Mount.
Although I have been to the diesel plant a few years ago. Pardon me, but I'm completely ignorant about who benefits from that diesel project. I thought that was exclusively for the use of San City. That's one question. Second question, didn't Cal AM build that diesel project? And if so, aren't they responsible to maintain it at their own expense? Just like any contractor that is responsible for a, for a problem of their building their project? Those are just a couple of questions that I have.
Yep. So the building at their own expense, you know, in dealing with investor-owned utilities, there's almost nothing that is their own expense. You know, the, the idea is to, you know, you pay for capital with a debt and equity. The debt gets recovered at the cost of the debt. The equity gets recovered at a pre-tax charge to the ratepayers. And so to, for the company to recover, you know, nine and a half percent on the equity investment, you got to charge the ratepayer 16% so that after taxes, state and federal taxes, the net is at nine and a half percent. So even though it would be their obligation to maintain the plant, this doesn't quite fall under the category of a big mistake for which ratepayers shouldn't be on the hook. There's some argument that the previous drought reduced the native water and the current last year reduced the native water that was used to kind of dilute the, the seawater to create brackish water. So it's hard to argue that, that it was, you know, a mistake or should be just all on the shareholders rather than the ratepayers. And I'm sorry, Director Malik, what was the first part of your question?
Does the peninsula take advantage of that?
Yes. Yeah, so, yeah, the, the original faceplate capacity is about 300 acre feet per year. Initially, 94 acre feet was specifically set aside for the benefit of the river. So in other words, reduce Cal AM's rights to take water from the river by 94 acre feet. And then Cal AM has the right to any other output that the city of San City has not allocated through its entitlement to others. And to date, they've only done about five and a half acre feet for San City projects, which means, you know, in the grand scheme of things, there's about, you know, if it was working at full capacity, there's about 294 acre feet that's going to the benefit of the whole peninsula. But because production's only been about 200 acre feet per year recently, it, it means that, you know, 194 acre feet are going to the, the peninsula as a whole. But yeah, it, it's, it's been treated as and will continue to be treated as for probably a couple decades as a general water supply for the community as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other on this discussion item? Just coming from me on it, then we'll take it out to the public. Well, let's take it out to the public and then I'll comment at the end of.
All right. So if you would like to make public comment on this matter, please raise your hand or if you're calling in, push star nine. And at this time, I would like to invite Michael Bear. Michael, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry I got here late, so I missed a lot of it, but I guess you just gave $4 million to the, congratulations. That's great. So my thought is related to, Dave said something about 1 point something, 1.3, 1.7 million dollars for this project. And I'm still not clear that original capacity is like 300 acre feet and it's only producing 100, 150 acre feet. So my first question is how many acre feet are we gaining by spending 1 point X million dollars? And it kind of seems to me it works out to maybe $10,000 per acre foot, which is really expensive. So like, what's the numbers? You know, you don't want 300 acre feet, you don't want to be spending $10,000 an acre foot. And this is just in my head. I could be completely off on those numbers, but we need to know what's that ratio in terms of what the investment is. And then I agree with Director Softlock, you know, I always thought Cal AM and San City had this deal running it. I don't, you know, I read the general history, but I don't know the specifics of it, but I thought, you know, somehow the ratepayers paid for San City and, and, and Cal AM had some kind of deal. And, and, you know, Dave did explain that 94 acre feet went to the river, which is great. And Cal AM has the rest and and the, you know, five acres are going to to San City. What does it cost per acre foot? And is that a wise investment based on what, you know, you know, how much, you could spend that money on putting up a bunch of umbrellas and catching the rain and funneling it over to the seaside aquifer somehow? Is this the best use of money per acre foot? Thank you.
Next up, we have Alyssa French. Alyssa, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Hi there, everyone, and thank you for your hard work. My name's Alyssa French and I'm a student at CSU MB. So I'm, I'm of the understanding that the primary reason new wells have been implemented at the San City desalination plant is to maintain and increase water production in response to drought. California as a whole is currently experiencing drought and because of climate change could experience an increase in the frequency and severity of droughts. Will building more desalination wells in response to drought be the only means of maintaining adequate water production? And is this a decision for, for, I guess, costs that public will have to incur if this is continued? Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Next, we have Susan Sciamoni. Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you. I just have a question because Michael makes a good point about cost and I hope that that's not as it sounded. But I have a question in terms of measure J and the buyout. If that plant, who, whose ownership is that plant and will that be part of the district if the buyout goes through, will that property or will that plant become part of what is bought? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Tyler, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Hi, so I'm Tyler Morgan. I'm also a student at CSMB and I just had a question regarding exactly what, how, how the well is going to be used for. So is it, are we expecting that's going to increase the amount of acre feet, which I believe was 300 acre feet was the number that was supposed to produce? Are we expecting that's going to improve that number or is it strictly to help meet the discharge levels to maintain your like ambient sea level salinity so that we don't harm the environment and keep the same production level of 300 acre feet? And if so, is that, have we like lost that amount of acre feet per year just to like natural deterioration of it to the drought or, and can we expect that with the next well as well? Do we, do we think that would deteriorate in like another drought or just over time? So I was just curious about the exact nature of how those events kind of transpire. And that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tyler. Next up, we have Anna Thompson. Anna, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Yes, my name is Anna Thompson. I have just a question. If we're going to build the diesel plant or at least have a new well, do we use green electricity? Do we use clean energy to run it? Or are we going to put a lot of more CO2 in the atmosphere? That's all I was asking.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
Thank you. General Manager, can you answer any of those questions?
Yeah, so the, the cost per acre foot, one shouldn't think of it as just 1.2 million divided by how many acre feet you get of additional capacity. You take the, the 1.2 million and you amortize it over the life. And that's your annual incremental additional cost for the, the project. It's like your more, your mortgage, right? And then you divide that by how many acre feet you're getting. So if it's currently been averaging around 190 to 200 acre feet and this project, you know, at 200 gallons per minute, you, you actually wouldn't need a second well. This could do all the work. But let's say you recover 120 acre feet. So you need to amortize that 1.2 million. Figure out what its annual payment is. And you know, just as a rule of thumb, it could be about $156,000 a year. And if you divide that by, let's say, just 100 acre feet of new water, that's, you know, $1,500 per acre foot each year. So, you know, it's on the, it's a little lower than pure water Monterey water. It's a lot more than pumping it out of the ground. But, you know, it's, it's not that significant relative to a D cell plant in North Marina in the high 5,000 per acre foot or so forth. The cost of operations doesn't go up significantly because the people are the same, the labor is the same. There would be an increase in chemical costs. So, you know, raise that a little bit, but it, it's still on the order of perhaps not more than what we're currently charging for pure water Monterey water. But it's quick. It can come online and it can have an important help. Because after the next water year, the company's going to be down to precisely what's allowed under the legal limit for, you know, in the next water year is basically 11 months out. Now, this project won't get started next month, but you know, the timing will be, will be important. Some of the additional questions, you know, on greenhouse gas emissions. You know, they, they buy the electricity off the grid. The city didn't go out and build a solar farm or, you know, buy, you know, do any other sorts of mitigations, buying carbon credits or anything like that. What we hear a lot these days is, hey, that's PG&E's mandate. They have to get down to, you know, 40% of renewables by this date, 60% by that date. And so in a lot of sense, this is still an energy hog. Brackish water D cell is less energy intensive than is seawater desalination. So it's already got a little bit better carbon footprint. But, yeah, there's no offsets that are part of this project. You know, they're just relying on PG&E to do their part to change their portfolio towards renewables. And I can't remember anything else in there that's relevant, but if you have questions or.
One of the comments was about the amount of salinity increase in salinity.
Yeah, so the, the reason for the increase in salinity, there's different theories that different people have, but one example, the, the first time any of this was noticed was during the previous five-year drought. And what happens is brackish water is a combination of seawater and naturally occurring water. And the naturally occurring water in that perched sand dune aquifer is rainwater. Well, if you don't get rain for a long period of time, but you're still getting the influx of seawater, the salinity goes up. You can take all the salt out of higher salinity water. But this facility was designed to operate in a certain fashion where the brackish water, by not having as much salt in it to begin with, your discharge water then is basically the same concentration of salt as seawater itself. And so the waste discharge permit is you're discharging a seawater-like quality of discharge into a seawater intruded aquifer, you know, the, the coastal sands. And that's the way it works. So if your intake water gets higher and higher in salinity, you can't meet that output criterion. And that's really what the problem is. And so it, it's, it's based on playing this chemi- chemistry and mathematics game about concentrations of salt in the intake affecting the concentration of salt in the out, outfall.
Your chair, you're on mute.
Thank you. The question is, General Manager, if this came back to us and, and for action item and we said no, what, what, what could happen at the PUC? I think the PUC already spoke on this issue, but we trying to help out now. What?
Yeah, well, the PUC spoke out and it wasn't really favorable. And Cal AM would proceed with due haste if they knew that they were going to get it in the rate base. If they, if they were stuck with the decision that keeps it out of the rate base, then there's little likelihood. Our interest is not so much, you know, the added annual cost of, you know, a 1.2 million dollar project. Ours is more, we've done the math on looking at, can the community comply with the cease and desist order for the next three years? And there's some question, you know, we're going to have to go out next year and try to find an extra 400 or so acre feet. And that's based on assuming 200 acre, acre feet per year from the San City D cell plant. And as I said, it, you know, it's roughly averaged around there, but it was 190 in a prior year and so forth. So if production continued to decline, that only means we have to go, go find more. We think we can find about 500 acre feet from pure water Monterey's existing capacity that's not been contracted for. But then the next year, we're going to be looking for 800 additional acre feet because of the river diversion goes down yet again permanently. And so for these next two to three years, we're looking for every drop we can. You know, we know that if it rains, we'll increase production for ASR and you'll get Production for ASR and you'll get more table 13 water rights. And so we're looking to those places as well. We still have a bank of about 1,200 acre feet in ASR. But when you're starting to count, you know, dozens of acre feet or hundreds of acre feet. That means. That we were paying attention. And so to give up on this plant at this time is just not not good water supply planning. Given the constraints that we have.
Okay, is this going to come back as an action item or something? Or is this just a discussion on it?
It was just discussion because we don't really have any authority. We we've already administratively. Found that an intake well owned by CalM or an intake well owned by San City doesn't alter the definition of the project for. For our purposes, under our rules and regs. So at this point, if. You know, we have supported CalM's position because we think the water is needed. But we've got no authority actionable authority to affect it. They'll either get permission from the. Commission in a modified decision or not.
Okay, thank you. Director Riley, go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of the questions was who owns the D cell plant? And I think the, Andy, I think you made a statement, Dave, about. It's a very tight lease agreement and so on. Could you?
Yeah, yeah.
Describe the ownership and what tight means?
Yeah, and the and the question also went to what happens if the CalM system is acquired? Yeah, and so it is owned by San City and operated by CalM under a lease agreement. The lease agreement through a bruising. Application to the Public Utilities Commission was approved and so it's part of the CalM. Operations. They CalM has to pay for ONM and chemicals and energy and all that stuff. And so year in and year out, there's balancing accounts as those costs go up. The cost to operate the plant goes up, but the rent paid to San City does not go up. So. There's two components, the fixed rent cost and then the actual cost of operations. Going to the, you know, effect on the acquisition. I think the city of San City is very concerned that. That we would not take on their lease agreement. But it's an existing obligation of the company. And so we would be. Charged with the obligation to take it on. You know, at least through its term, and then we would look at it, just like any company should. But I think it's. The nervousness of of what will happen to my lease at the end of its term, which we haven't really addressed. But. You know, if it's economic to run, then we would renew the lease.
Okay.
And and just the last comment, the the lease agreement, the fixed cost to the San City. Is to pay off their debt on building the thing, right? I mean, with the loans and so on that they got.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, no other question? We're gonna close this discussion item and go to the last one. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, and I I think I'll short circuit this one a little bit. But we are looking for direction as to. How? Well, there's there's three, three things we need to make a decision on. Right now, internally for all of our employees. We have self-reporting. And a lot of our sister agency agencies have gone to mandatory reporting. A number of them have gone to you must be vaccinated or you lose your job. That would include Castroville Community Services District and the Waste Management District. Others have you must demonstrate proof of vaccination. And if you have an exemption. You have to be tested at least once per week. And that's. Not atypical of others. So. At some point, we're going to need. To know if the board is, you know, how how hard? Do you want to make it on on folks? And then we also need to get a sense of when you want to get back into the boardroom. In person. And we've talked about this a little bit before that, you know, our facilities are not as. Big or permanent as some of the others. So, you know, putting permanent partitions between folks. And we need to look at that. Number of folks are not back 100% in the office for people. We're kind of there anyway, except in the areas where. You know, five to seven people sit in close proximity, then we've been managing that on kind of rotating. But the the two pieces we're looking for are right now, given that. We're not ready to jump full in now that we've had reports of mandatory masking. And a potential winter surge in data. So we're, you know, still kind of data driven. But the the two issues are, when do you want to get back in person if you can get back in person? For board meetings. And secondly. Do you want us to develop a mandatory vaccination program for staff? It's working very easily for new staff in a lot of the our sister organizations. You know, that's an easy one. But for, you know, take MST, for example, and and Dave Laredo, you can probably speak to this one a little bit. But MST has a vaccination mandate. A masking in public space mandate. And if you don't. Get your vaccination, there's progressive discipline. Which could lead to to dismissal. But they're working with their unions to, you know. It's not a one and done situation. There's progressive discipline.
If if I could just interrupt for one moment. While MST does provide somewhat of a model. That is a federal workforce. They are set by the Federal Transit Administration. So those rules are a bit different than your rules would be. And secondly, we have to keep in mind that anything that you do to address working conditions for your employees is a topic of bargaining. And the the board can provide general direction, but you cannot just manage this by fiat. You have to provide direction and then eventually you're going to sit down with your employees, decide what are those working conditions that that they're going to agree to.
Yeah, I can tell you that a number of the agencies that have gone to the mandatory proof of vaccination did not bargain that. But the there are others that have had. The like the ones where you get vaccinated or lose your job. There's definitely been interaction with the unions.
Okay, questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Director Malick.
Aren't we governed by the county policy?
Yeah, somewhat. You know, it's interesting. CalM is governed by internal corporate policy, but then they have people that. Work in the Presidio, so they're governed by federal policy. And then they have people who work that are governed by OSHA. And CalOSHA doesn't always line up with the county. It should, but there's been places where they don't quite line up. And so we've been looking at, you know, basically everybody. And we also look at Google and, you know, all the the high tech companies. Because they spend quite a bit of money on it. But. We are governed by the county, which is why we're currently under the mandatory mask mandate. But the county hasn't provided any guidelines other than for their own employees. As to whether or not. Testing is going to be mandatory for the exempt and vaccination proof of vaccination is formally reported and proven or. Self-reported. So it's just. I I can tell you by the one, two, three, four, the nine. Entities that we've talked to. There's some consistency, but they're all over the page. There's no, you know, 100% the same.
Okay, Director Riley.
I'll go after Karen if, go ahead, Karen.
Um, do we know about what percentage of our employees are vaccinated?
Yes. I want to be very careful here though, because. Let's just say it's over 90, it's 98%. Let's call it that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So from a practicality standpoint, it doesn't seem that we have a problem. Or why are we making it a problem?
Well, yeah. We don't appear to have a problem, but I can tell you that we. We have had employees who have had COVID and have recovered. We have employees currently who. Can be contact traced to recent COVID breakthrough cases. And so those are the kinds of things we worry about. If somebody has come into contact with somebody else who has COVID. Even if they're, well, currently, even if they've been vaccinated, we still request a test. And quarantine. But, yeah, the, you know, the fears are this thing's not gone. Not everybody who's vaccinated is 100% safe with, you know, breakthrough. And. And and we have to protect. The people, you know, around the individuals who might get exposed or might be more lax or might not want to get vaccinated. And you probably, you know, you've seen this in all the the press reports. It's, you know, masking is. To protect others, not necessarily just yourself and. But it's it's mostly, well, you know, you you raise a good point, Director Malik. Does the board even want a policy? I mean, it is, it's working pretty well so far. And. Nothing that has affected people has happened in the workplace yet. It's mostly been people's social lives and. You know, personal choices outside of the office. And as long as. You know, they get. Notified by their body early enough that they can not come in and bring it to their coworkers. Yeah, it's been working.
Can you put them on a leash so that they don't go? They they don't socialize outside of the district?
Exactly.
All right, Director Riley, go ahead.
Just a couple of points. One, I think with the potential surge. And then with the winter flu anyway, and people who are more vulnerable. I think we should not be opening up our conference room. So that's and then let's just see what happens come February, March and see what what the trends look like. The other thing is that if there's kind of a voluntary. Reporting system that seems to be working, I don't know what you mean when people. Is it? Is it? It's self-reporting, right? There's no mandatory requirements for vaccination and so on. I think as long as that's working, I think that's fine. When you say 98, that tells me there's one person who's a holdout. And that's okay, I think, as long as the people are kind of comfortable with the knowledge of all that. And I'm a little bit like, I'm a little bit with Mr. Malik here. It doesn't appear that we have a problem. But what seems to be working, I would, I would think we ought to be able to continue. And maybe just a reminder to your staff that you expect they to be reporting. Any incidents and situations that should be, you know, that their their coworker should be aware of as well as the public.
Yep. Well, I would ask Suresh, who's still on. He's been managing the the self-reporting area and obviously is. Control over HR or HR people. Are you hearing anything here tonight in this discussion that concerns you? Are you you good? You all good?
We all good and we did. We did check on the HR side of it. And basically, that's how we started the reporting of the vaccination process. And we've kind of like categorized the. The number of questions for people that answer the vaccination on the vaccination form, which is, are you vaccinated? Do you plan to be vaccinated? Or you don't plan to be vaccinated at all? I mean, those are the three. Perfectly acceptable question that we can ask the employees. And so we've generated, we've developed a form that employees have filled. And as David said, we've got 98% of the people that are fully vaccinated. And we plan on continuing to update that form. As for new hires, when when new employees are hired on board, there is a mandatory form now, which is the vaccination form that they have to fill out. So. That's how we kind of like. Manage this thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, if others were nodding when George kind of said, let's just see what happens. Check the data. There could be a surge. Let's revisit this in January, February. We're fine with that. It's just. Want to make sure that the board is fine with that.
I'm fine with it, but I'm I'm gonna leave it up to the General Manager and staff when you want fully staffed the building. That's up to you. The board is not in the building. All the time we in there is for a board meeting. And we want to use this system as long as we can. You know, I hope by the end of next year, we we back in there having meetings. But I agree with Director Riley. But as far as staff concerned, that's going to be on y'all. And if y'all feel like we need to do a mandate. Speak of it, but you only got one out there that 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 has been it. So. It that's up to you and you and the CFO. So. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Well, the most important thing is to. The most important thing is to provide as safe an environment as possible for people who are coming in to work in the building. That's number one. So, you know, ideally. Everybody or almost everybody should be vaccinated, although there might be a few people have medical reasons why. Why they shouldn't or why the vaccine might be ineffective for them. So I I would say, you know, whatever. Well, I agree with with George also, whatever. Arrangement seemed to protect employees as best you can, you know, and. You know, I support if. If you feel at some point that a vaccine mandate is is really needed, then, you know, we'll just, we should discuss it again. And the last thing I'll add is just. The third, the third vaccination, you know, for some people. They might, it might be time for them to get the third shot or maybe a few months from now. So that's also just something to keep an eye on.
Yeah, I just want to highlight one additional. So we've got an agency. Who the the board wanted to meet in person. They wanted to get back together, which they do. But they won't let the public in unless a public member has a proof of vaccination. And I thought, well, that's interesting, very difficult to enforce. But that also means then you're going to have to run a hybrid meeting to provide access to an unvaccinated member of the public. Which then gets us back to our problems with the amount of space in our boardroom and the amount of staff that we have to run. You know, a a hybrid meeting, you know, it's already challenging enough to run just a regular board meeting. You know, getting a third set of hands to. Run the run the Zoom piece while somebody's running the board piece and somebody else is doing the timer. You know, it's just. It's it's daunting, so.
Okay, Director Adams?
You know, I think all of us are just really struggling this with this just personally and professionally. Because there are no metrics that we can look at. We don't know whether we're being more effective. And productive as workers or or leaders or governors. This way or the other way. And I think that's something that's most unusual for us. Most of us are pretty data-driven people. And we're, we don't have anything to rely on. So we're having to just kind of wing it. Honestly, I think a lot of us feel that way. Clearly, I think it's it's easier in many ways for people to work from home. We're becoming comfortable with this. Are we missing something, though, by not having that sense of team that happens when you are more together, that sort of natural conversation that takes place where you? Do communicate better just because you happen to be seeing somebody when something's going through through your mind? There's no way to measure any of this. You know, I'm sure that there's somebody far more advanced than than I am. Who's in some think tank someplace doing exactly that, looking at our phones and, you know, telling us exactly what it is that. We're doing either better or worse. But until something like that is published, I think we're doing the best that we possibly can. And, you know, in my heart, I was thinking, you know, maybe we should all make a mandate or not mandate. God only knows. That's the last word I ever want to use anymore. But that we should all make an agreement that beginning in January, we'll all try going back to work and. But that we should all make an agreement that beginning in January, we'll all try going back to work and seeing what it's like. You know, I'm not saying that that's a great idea, but I I feel need to almost take a step. And make a determination on what it is that we want to see next, what it is that we want to see happen. The way we are, I feel like we're all just, you know, kind of going along with this, really rather enjoying this sort of individual. Workspace. It's it's really tough, you know, it really is. I'm just thinking as a working person who's. A company, a come accustomed to really working more together in teams. And I sort of miss that. You know, I really do. And I feel like that helps me become more more creative in a sense. And each one of us probably has a very different way of of thinking and feeling about it. So. Forgive my just sort of ex postulating that I I I don't get a chance to talk to anybody anymore.
It's okay. Mary.
It's okay. You'll be all right. All right. This is a discussion item. Let's open up to the public. I hate to keep them out of it.
Yes, so if you would like to make public comment on item number 18, please raise your hand. And this time I would like to invite Susan Scavoni. Make public comment. Susan, when you're ready, please present a comment.
Hi, folks. Thank you again for letting me speak. I personally would like to see the Zoom last a while longer. Partly just out of caution, we're going to have another surge coming up, it sounds like. I know we have a very high vaccination rate in Monterey County, but. We have a heck of a lot of visitors that come here. And I don't think anyone's screening people for what's going on. So. I would just really think that it should be more cautionary, please. I'm very high risk for this virus. And personally, I really appreciate the fact that I can come to these meetings on Zoom. Because at this point, I don't think I would be coming in person. So I do appreciate that you're extending this. I hope you will just extend it a bit longer. And I know how hard it is for people that have not had contact with others, how socially deficit we are. It's hard and but I think we need to hang in there a little bit longer. That's my perspective. But thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
Susan. At this time, I would like to invite John Telly. John, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, board. I would like to agree 100% Susan Scavoni that the idea of continuing to Zoom is the best way to go. Thank you very much.
E John. Next, Melody Chrislock, when you're ready, please present your comment.
I apologize, Melody.
I got it.
They need with you.
That's okay, Joel. Melody Chrislock, I think it's great to have the Zoom continue. I think you're getting a lot more public participation. It's just so much easier for the public to sit in on these board meetings than driving over to your facility and sitting there as we used to. I know it probably won't last forever, but I hope it lasts a lot longer. Thank you. Bye.
Next, we have Anna Thompson. Anna, when you're ready, please present your comments.
Yes, hi. I'm so happy that you're having the meetings in Zoom. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to come at all. So I hope that we could, we could still meet like this for a period of time anyway, until things calm down. Thank you so much for everything you all do. Thank you.
Marley, when you're ready, please present your comment.
I agree that the Zoom meetings allow many of us, including me, to attend who otherwise would not be able to attend. I'd also like to comment on on just the flavor of saying that you're hard on people if you require vaccinations. I think requiring vaccinations is for anyone, for everyone who does not have. A serious documented medical reason not to have one. I think requiring vaccinations is part. An essential part of creating a good working environment, a safe working environment, and actually protecting all the workers. Especially those who may. Have some idea of freedom that includes a lot of socializing. So those people especially would need to be vaccinated. Thank you so much.
Amy, when you're ready, please present your comment.
I do agree with the. Supervisor Adams that we need to get back to work and get. Back to norm. But I also agree that. Even if we do get back, and I know it's probably more difficult to arrange these kind of Zoom meetings, but. More people can attend. And I think that is what is important is that you are represented. And you know our opinions. So. But I think that everybody should try to get back to work again, too. So. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I believe Anna Thompson already made her public comment. Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so go ahead and return this back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to add two, two more parting shots that as we remain remain in this electronic world. You know, we do have in the consent calendar, every meeting, the 30-day extension of the. The meeting electronic form. Which worked fine for last month, works fine for this month. Will work fine for the December board meeting because it's within 30 days of today. But between the December board meeting and the January board meeting is beyond 30 days. So I'm going to have to look to district council to tell us how to finesse that because I don't want to call a special meeting just so you can. Renew the resolution to meet electronically. So we're going to have to figure that one out, number one. And number two, we're all watching to see how. How that provision, you know, that assembly bill that got signed. How long that's going to stay in effect because that that will affect us as well. And I'm not sure what the the term is on that. So. A couple of pieces of homework that we're going to need district council to look at.
Well, Jim. I don't mind having an earlier January meeting to keep it within the 30 days than having that one at the end. Like like we usually do. So that'd be up to the new chair and vice chair about that. Well, I wouldn't mind saying that move up. A little bit. So if that's possible. So we stay within the 30 days or or whatever.
So. Yeah, we're going to have the same problem in February as well. So the Jan- January, February problem is. Martin Luther King Day, President's Day.
Right, but.
Yeah.
Unless we don't have, you know, big items coming up or whatever that the staff have to do. So any other questions? If none, just like the report out that the 49ers won tonight? And. We can adjourn.